Good evening, and thank you for being here tonight to take part in this important conversation about our schools and our community. My name is Cindy Davis. I serve on the Utah State Board of Education, but I'm here representing myself as an excited moderator tonight. This election, as you know, is especially significant because we are laying the foundation for a brand-new school district. The board members elected this fall to help set the vision, priorities, and direction for the future of the Aspen Peace Area. Each candidate will begin with up to three minutes for an opening introduction. This will be to get to know them and their qualifications and what they hope for the future of the district. Following that, candidates will respond to submitted questions with a limit of two minutes per response. To keep things fair, we will alternate which candidate answers first on each question. At the end of the evening, each candidate will have up to ninety seconds to share a closing statement. Our timekeeper is seated on the front row, will keep candidates and help them to stay on track. A yellow card will be raised when thirty seconds remain, and a red card will be raised when time has expired. To foster constructive dialogue, we've encouraged candidates to focus on policy ideas and priorities rather than personal attacks or vague others. We also ask the audience to remain attentive and refrain from cheering, clapping, or any other interruptions during the Q and A portion. At the conclusion of the evening, we invite you to join us in a round of applause for the candidates. Thank you for helping us to create a thoughtful and respectful discussion, and with that, we will begin. And since you're seating next to me, Jason, go ahead and start with you, and then we'll have Mindy give her introduction. And then when we have our closing statements, we'll start with Mindy, and then end with Jason, to be fair, if that's okay with both of you.
Okay?
Oh. This is so that the folks watching at home will be able to hear clearly.
Makes sense. All right. Hi, I'm Jason Harp. I am kind of brought with me for C-Fly, and I'm very, very excited for this opportunity to be here with you and to talk about our new school district. I have education as just, it's in my life. It has always been important for me. I grew up, my education was important, my family, my dad was an educator teacher at BYU, and my mom just always encouraged it. It was important to everything we did. And as I increase in continuing school, I just wanted to be a backer for the community, so I decided to become an educator myself. And so I chose to do elementary school because I couldn't decide what subject would be best, and so I taught to teach them all. And I enjoy working with children, and so I became a elementary school teacher, and I taught fifth grade and third grade. And I just had a blast doing it. Kids just bring a little spark to my life, and I just love being there with them. And as an educator, I was always just so interested in doing the best I could for my students. And so instead of just being a teacher, I decided I was going to start a student club. I did that, and to help support those students, and I saw that there was another need at the school, needed student leadership. So I created a student leadership team and ran that facility for the students at my school. Because I knew it wasn't the, I wanted to make sure I had somebody to fill it, I was excited. And so I have been really invested in doing that for our students and children, because that's really where our future. And because of that, I went on to do this for my students, so I had access to reading. Worked really hard to make that happen. Then I got the opportunity to not only just help my students, but also help teachers. And I became an instructional coach, which I worked for as three years, supporting teachers to help them reach their potential so that they can help their students reach their potential. And I found that I, in doing that, I needed to do work for them, so I went on PhD to specifically be able to support those students or those teachers who benefit from those students. And that's just been a passion of mine, to just work and to find the best options we can to help make the best we can for our community and the community I have been serving. And for me, I know that my, that this district, it's coming, is really impactful for me. I have four kids, three of whom are in school, so one who has yet to start his journey. And so these decisions that were made is going to really be an impact for them and for everybody in the community. And as an educator, as a parent, as a community member, I'm committed to making sure that we do the best that we can for our community so that we can have the best future. Thank you.
I'm in a quiz, and I had a very similar story as Jason, as far as, you know, bringing my mom was a high school teacher, and public education was a huge part of my family. And so when I had my own children and brought my first child to kindergarten, I marched myself right into the first PTA meeting and have been involved in volunteerism in the schools ever since. And so been here in Lehigh for twenty years, and my own children have gone to five of the six schools that this seat represents. And so this is a very personal thing for me. I know the teachers and administrators and the staff at these schools. And I have had two of those, that first kindergarten year all the way through, and her brother. So two of mine have graduated from Alpine School District and have received really excellent educations. I'm really, really grateful for public education and what it does. And so much of that is done through the community members, right? So my background is in PTA, doing the different jobs there, Berkeley tables, reflections, Battle of the Books, all of those things. And then when River Rock was being built, I stepped up as the PTA president to open that brand-new school. As my kids got older, I started getting really involved in the school community councils, and I've been on school community councils at every level of education, primary, middle, and high school, and learned a lot about what we can do with our money and how to serve our students so they have the best chance of student success through using those trust line funds. And what I've found is that people are what's most important to these teachers. So when you ask about why I'm doing this, I was in groups of parents worried for these great educators that my kids have been around and had as teachers, and what would happen to them in this split. And wanting to make sure we hired a really awesome, strong superintendent so that we could create a culture where students can succeed, families can be involved, and they can have great representation, which is one of my favorite things about the school district split, is that I get to represent six schools, which is going to be so awesome. So that's a little bit of my background. I just really committed to public education and all the levels, our administrators, our teachers especially, our staff, librarians, and then our families. Because I think when you have a really good board member representing you, at least in my experience, you have a voice in your child's education, whether you're volunteering or just being specifically active about one issue. Being able to have access to a board member is really important. Thank you.
Thank you both for those introductions. The questions that we're going to be asking have been submitted and compiled from a bunch of community questions that were sent in and kind of put into categories here. The first question is going to be about hiring the new superintendent. One of the first and perhaps primary functions of the new board will be selecting a superintendent and a business administrator for the new school district. What are three attributes or qualifications that you feel should guide the new school board in making this decision?
Do you want me to go first?
Please do.
This is such a great question, and it really is one of the reasons that I decided to run. Utah is so unique in how many students that we get here, right? We have a lot of children, which can make funding tight. But I think that a good superintendent knows how to work within that system. So something I'm going to be looking for in a superintendent is how is he going to deal with large number of students and smaller amount of dollars? What are his priorities in that? I'm going to be looking for someone who can bring a really great culture to our school district, a culture that celebrates student success, that celebrates family involvement, those kind of things. So how are they going to create, co-create with this school board policy that is then understood well by the community and encourages the community to be involved? So that's another thing. I think our business administrator is going to be so important. I actually just went to a meeting with Wells Fargo that talked about all of the business administrator does, and that was so helpful to really learn some of the key things they're going to have to be able to do. But it's really funding our schools, right, which is important, and how we, where we put money, what kind of bonds that we decide to take, what kind of investments do we make? Which school does invest their money, short-term and long-term? So I would ask the business administrator how he plans on making the most of our tax dollars by how he wants to make us money, how he wants to invest that money, what his ideas are on which kind of bonds, or what we can do for those kind of bonds. What really, the culture and understanding our unique situation here in Lehigh specifically, I think, is important.
Great, thank you, Mindy. I think that she brought up something really good to consider. And one of the things I want to mention is I've had the opportunity to rub shoulders with a lot of great school leaders. In my group position, I am able to occasionally rub shoulders with the superintendent up in the joint schoolship over. And I've had opportunities to down here as well, on the superintendents and people. And one thing that has been certainly most about a good superintendent is they are somebody who is able to, who is inspired. Are they able to look at what's going on, and read and say, hey, here's the vision, let's pull together? And really kind of have that emotion, so they're going to be somebody who's going to be inspired and to make sure that we're achieving our most important goals. The other thing is I think that they need to be somebody who is going to be collaborative. That means it's a board, we're going to have to work together with the community, with the teachers, everybody. They're going to have to kind of balance that sort of little special needle of working with all different parts. So maybe look for something who's really invested in listening to all the different voices of you and then making a wise decision. And additionally, I think preferably, I like a husband who also is aware of our local needs, somebody who is familiar with this area, sort of what's been going on, as a way to help, to be able to just kind of jump off the starting blocks and not have to get into speed. But all that together is, I think, where I believe the school board, sorry, superintendent, and so one thing for a business administrator is to be able to work together, collaborate, and really have that vision, have it very clear, and be laser-focused on that. So as a superintendent, I mean, we'll see, you know, making sure that's the type of person we'd be getting for.
Thank you both. So we'll segue from what your priorities are to hire a superintendent and business administrator to what you think are the board priorities. What do you believe is the number-one priority for the area you represent? How would you go about advocating for this and perhaps other priorities you have identified?
Okay, I think this is, yeah, it's probably going out, talking to people, kind of saying, hey, what is it that you think is really important? Usually people aren't just like, oh, I don't know, I thought, but then we are talking, they come up and they're like, hey, you know, make sure that we're improving, that this district is addressing our needs. And so as a school board, I think whatever it is, whether that's looking at budget or looking at potential changes, or I think with teachers and students, we have to be, think about the, basically, the communities hurt, and that they are part of the process. I have a vision that we are able to recruit the community and have the community through groups to be able to kind of put in their say, share with us that vision. So it's not just a vision that the superintendent or the school board does, but it's our vision. That's really what I hope we're able to do as a school board. And with that here, I think that our community is actually one that's still growing. And so that's going to be one to see, make sure we balance, try to address the needs of how do we really, what are the needs of our community? And so altogether, making sure that the community, making sure that the community is, has the same vision and completely reached out, and that we're going to do this, we're going to do it.
Yeah, I think that's going to be really important. You know, this area has this unique, Lehigh High is a large high school, a large middle school. We have some elementaries that are very large. So as I think about what I hope for for this new school district and the priorities is ultimately student success, and that just comes in so many ways. It's not just specifically about what they're learning in the classroom. It's about the experiences they get to have in elementary and middle and high school. And so many of those are dictated by what kind of, how many students they have, how many are in their class, what kind of classes are offered, right? There's just so much that goes into it. So specifically for this area, a lot of what I hope to prioritize is the growth that we're seeing, making sure elementary schools, kids can have a playground to go play in, you know. North Point right now is really large. A priority of mine really is to get a new elementary school in this area. There's a lot of kids at Lehigh, and one of the huge issues is parking. Anyone who has a kid here knows that. So it's very specific things to this area that I would hope, that I can contribute to student success, right? What they offer in the middle schools, what can they do? Right now, there's a sports program simply for the ninth graders. Is that something we look at expanding? But also taking care of all of our groups of students. So Lehigh has a lot of special need kids that I would really hope that we could look at. Our STEM program, all of our different programs to really create the best possible student success that we can, making sure that they're available to everyone.
Thank you both. Let's talk about taxes. ASD has approved some property tax increases over the past several years. If elected, how would you approach decisions on property tax increases for the new district? And under what circumstances, if any, would you support them?
I have learned a lot about taxes in the last few months. This is a great question, and I have, my parents live near Lehigh and are on the same hub. And my dad's favorite question every time he sees me is, they raised my taxes, right? That's something we have to consider, right? There's a lot of people that pay taxes and contribute to our education system that don't have students that currently go to the schools. I will say, I think one of the key things is really good education, right? Because it's one thing to see that your taxes are going up on paper, and another thing to understand why they're paying up, right? So I think that the district can do a good job of, when we see a need in raising taxes, that we are communicating really well to the public of what that tax raise actually means. A lot of times, we have these general obligation bonds that are for ten, twenty, thirty years, right, different times. And once they're done, that money drops off and we don't have to pay. That's not always reflected in tax staying, right? There's just a lot of unique things that we can do well to educate people about why taxes are going up. I just learned that the state issues a maximum tax rate that not all school district treat. Some have, some have just been like, we're going to tax at the max, and then it never raises because they're already at the max. Whereas I feel like Alpine has done a really good job of being careful with their money so that they're raising it, and they have raised it six times the last ten years, which seems like a lot, but they've never reached that map. So they're just raising it to a lot of times take the current budget or address the needs of like the school district splitting into three, or more capital projects. But I think communication is a really important aspect of taxation.
Okay, I think this is a thing that I say every time I talk to people. Probably the number-one thing that people mention to me is the taxes, and what my views on that. And what I often tell them is, I kind of think about my personal finances. What is it that I have to do? Well, I have the hard income, and what I need to know, where I can sit down and say, hey, what's most important? What are we going to make sure, what do we have to cover? And then once we have all the needs covered that are most important, so to say, well, we still have some of this, how can we pull that out? And I think that's the same principle that our school district should follow. Hey, let's make sure that what we are, we're going to prioritize the most important things, the non-negotiables, which is going to be any of that affects student outcomes and support the teachers and making sure that our vision is covered. And then maybe also say, hey, no, let's, let's look at this program. Was that all that kind of work, we need to adjust it? Maybe it's the thing that we say, hey, you know, this is good for now. Maybe it's another thing, it's like, hey, that's a really nice thing, but maybe we give it a couple of years, we've had a chance to kind of, it kind of covers all of that, our feedback. And so I think this is where we have to approach this with that kind of lens, of saying, hey, what's important, important, and evaluating the details of that as we look around and see that. And when it comes to the tax increase, I would say, you know, things in communication was fantastic. And I think whatever it is, whenever these decisions are coming up, the school board needs to make sure that we are communicating very clearly exactly those different factors. And not just saying, you know, oh, why don't we be thinking of this, and here's why. Maybe you can say, hey, you know, be proactive about it, if there are other things we're, oh, here's other things we're seeing. And obviously, there's some of that catalyst being exposed. But I think being proactive about saying, hey, there's some of the future needs, let's start having this conversation all in advance. I think will then be a way to keep that transparency in our taxation and in our budgets.
Thank you. We're going to talk about constituent concerns. You may or may not have heard constituent concerns about what might be happening in schools or classrooms as you've been on the campaign trail, whether it's AI, sensitive materials, political perspectives of teachers, or other hot topics. How, as one member of the board, would you go about addressing these expressed concerns?
Well, this is an interesting question, because I literally, I wish I'd received one of those, as I've been out. And one of the important things, and this is something that's, as I've been talking with people on their doorstep and they've been sharing these concerns, some of us said, how would we vote on this, how would we vote on this? And I had this, and so it's like, well, you know, I was there in the past, I didn't have all that information. But I will promise you that I listened. And that's one of the things that I've been talking to people, and reaching out to them, and I listen to what they have to say without necessarily expressing all of my thoughts. Because I think that's important to know what the community is doing without being, that's a judgment of it. And as a representative, I think that's important to also be aware that the community has its needs and thoughts. And I'm not just a representative of myself or the people who let me. The people think I'm supposed to be, but I'm a representative of everybody in the area. And so I think it's very important to be proactive about, you know, to find out what people are interested in and including people in that process. And so, and when it comes to be specific individuals, I always say, hey, you know, I'll have those conversations. And you have a time where it's not, or so, and you're there for probably about half an hour as this person is talking to me about their different concerns and their, yeah, talk, and reach certain things like, you know, I agree with that. Maybe not so much of that, and it was kind of interesting conversation, I said, really, you know, I'm willing to be voting for you, but I appreciate you taking the time for this. And that's kind of the philosophy related to my candidacy to the school board is, I'm here to represent people, I'm here to listen, and to solve the problem, to make decisions that are in line with what my colleagues would also find, what the community has shared, and real estate, and concerns that they can make. So I really want to be sure to represent the individuals that are with us.
The school district split's so great because we will have such great representation, right? In a more personal way, so that when these controversial issues come up, we really can talk to the six schools that we will represent. I think as a district, having a really strong policy on anything that's controversial is a really good idea. That if there is something that comes up, it goes through a very specific process so that we're unified in how that is dealt with. Because obviously, it will, it would be, you know, the district's still going to be a little bit big in what happens in how Alpine Highland American Fork might be a little bit different than what's happening in Lehigh. What's great is, as I've been in all of these schools, that someone brings an issue to me, I can be like, oh, well, this is what I know has happened at Willow Creek, or when I've been in school community council, this is what they've said at Lehigh High. Really being able to talk to administrators and get really good answers, really good communication, I think is super important to the community, because oftentimes, people are worried about something they've heard, right? And they want to know more. So I think being able to have really good communication within schools and with my constituents is important to let them know what's actually happening right here in Lehigh on any particular topic. And this is how our district is dealing with it, which should put families first, right? That families, when they have an issue, can come to the district and will deal with whatever that challenge specifically is and deal with it in a way that is uniform, I think will be really, really important so that we know exactly what's happening here in Lehigh and what's best for these specific schools that are concerned.
Thank you. This next question is about supporting teachers and leaders. Parents are their children's first teacher. However, at school, effective teachers are the main variable to student success, and school leaders are a close second. What is the board's role in recruitment and retention of effective classroom teachers and school leaders? What strategies do you have in mind for retaining and supporting teachers and leaders in your new district?
So a few years ago, like I've told you, mostly my experience is being a volunteer mom. But a few years ago, Skyridge High School, an art teacher quit just a few days before school, and they were left without a school teacher for the year. And I have a degree in art and came in and ended up teaching art for a year at Skyridge High. And two days before school, I had to come up with an entire curriculum for these classes that I was teaching, and then how to implement it. And I had teachers that were helping, and the district that had coaches, and I had collaboration at all of these schools that were so important to me as a teacher, especially as a first-year teacher, that made me understand a little bit more of the inner workings of the district, especially on a high school level, of what it takes. And as I hope to support teachers, I will tell you that creating that curriculum and teaching that content is the easiest thing I have to do down here. Our teachers are asked to do so much. I had to be a mental health specialist and know if kids were being abused or suicidal. I had to be a linguist and be able to somehow communicate with students that came in from all over the world and spoke languages that I didn't speak. And most of the time, my resource was ask if a kid speaks that language or use Google Translate. I had to do, there's just so many things. I only have thirty seconds, I could go on and on. But I think we ask a lot of our teachers without necessarily giving them a ton of support. So I think that in this creation of the new district, looking at how we can best support the teachers to do what they are paid to do and teach is going to be something really, really important to me. And how we can use administration and staff to fill in those gaps so that we have the full education and help of our students, if I can.
Thank you. And I, as a teenager myself, this question, right, it's one of the ones that need describing about. Being a classroom teacher, really, was able to be, I think back on those days where I had a student who just came in, things were not going well, and we're just struggling, and, you know, and life got hard as a teacher. And just having that experience, having gone from being a novice teacher to now being a teacher of teachers, is a very dear thing to my heart, to support the teachers. And so with that, I, I think there's some programs that we can continue to do for, since they're like, there's social coaching in different forms, I think it's the PLC coaches and maybe the learning coaches. I think you have to focus on supporting the new teachers so that they aren't just floundered every first year, that make sure those programs are robust and encouraged and that we're giving them the needs that they, the resources they need. Additionally, I think the district needs to make sure that we are looking at providing opportunities for experienced educators to be able to continue to develop and grow. And with that, though, we also need show appreciation for the work and time. I know a lot of teachers have, they go, oh, they have decreased salaries, that's going to be a big part of, what's going to, how do I think we need to do as the school district is created? At least a five-year plan, say, hey, these next five years, we are going to do this. And that concludes, I think, making sure our teachers are respected, I would say that, how we are supporting them. And I think that would all would influence. I see teachers who are about to pivot because they were given some work, were able to continue and have bonded to some things. In fact, that was me, I was a starting first-year teacher, we almost went. And so as a district, that's hyper, that we are providing them the resources, the support financially and the resources.
Thank you. This next question is about school safety. The legislature has provided additional funding for school The legislature has provided additional funding for school safety, although it is likely not enough for the list of priorities and needs. What would you prioritize in terms of working to ensure families and students feel safe sending students to school?
This is a question I actually got, well, a couple of weeks ago by, uh, talking about one of the, the cell phone policy actually was what they were talking about. But in reality, they were actually talking about the, the desire to be able to know where their kid was at. And what, that they were safe and in the case of any emergency. And, um, I know that in recent years, the state has required different things, blocking of all doors, the different protocols, which I have been a part of, of all the different lockdown drills I've been, uh, participated in, uh, and obviously those are things that we have to continue and follow. But I think the, this goes back to kind of the, some of these that we can ensure that we are, uh, be community type with the, the community. In fact, I was even hearing on the news today that there was something with, uh, that happened in, in August. And one of the good schools that were nearby, wasn't in the district school, but their charter school, they're like, we didn't know what was going on. And I think, uh, it's our point, uh, our role as a school board to make sure that we're building those bridges across the community. Having those relationships with the city, with the police, with, uh, all the state boards and first with the community to make sure that we are making sure that if there is a hole in our communication of events or things that we, that we show those out and then we're speaking about. And continuing to follow those, uh, initiatives that we're beginning to be done to make sure that students are safe. And I think one of those things is of course making sure that we create ways for parents to know that their kids are safe. And I think that's something that can be looked at, but can we make sure that parents are aware of the safety of their children?
Um, absolutely. Jason and I think we're all on the same page. It's just so nice to have a little candidates. Um, I think one of the big things with this is, you know, there's just taking a look at our schools, our safe walking routes, especially for our elementary school kids is going to be a big one. Um, now there's a crosswalk that just went in at Willow Creek Middle that I have been calling on for since my 21 year old was 12. And it just got put in this year and I'm so happy about it because I think it creates so much safety for these kids that are just walking across the road. Um, you know, I think it's, part of it is, and one thing I would really like to look at, Lehigh High has a full-time resource officer, but Willow Creek Middle does not. They share a resource officer. And last year they had a full time and this year it was a budget cut. And our elementary schools don't have resource officers there full time, right? And I think that's a huge safety issue that I would like to look at and see what we can do. I think, um, collaborating with the city and the police department is going to be a really important part of this job. Because so many things like street safety, um, safety against, you know, real emergencies in schools have to do with other working parts of our community. So I think being able to collaborate with them, looking at having better resource officers closer. I would, like I said, I really feel like the, the middle school needs a full-time one. Um, and then looking at our safe walking routes versus bus routes. Sometimes a school is within, you know, the walking route distance, but they have to cross really unsafe roads. And I think that's a really important thing to look at and try to work in our budget of busing, um, that will affect kids every day. So especially with a busy road, Lehigh's roads are right now.
Thank you. This next question is about programs. And they've given us this list of questions and it's full of acronyms, so I'm going to, um, decipher it on the spot. So be patient. As a new school district, the board will need to decide which programs will be prioritized for funding and staffing, including dual language immersion, gifted and talented, support for multi-language learners, career and technical education and special education, et cetera. What criteria would you use to decide which programs are most valuable for students and communities? And how would you balance student demand, equal access and budget constraints in making those choices?
Such a good question. And all those programs really do affect the day-to-day of our students at these schools. Um, and it's going to be really hard, right? Dollars are really tight to these programs and I always wish there were more dollars. And I think really looking at it would be that they're equally, equitably distributed across the district. I think that's super important as we look at some of these programs. Um, I have a special face for those who are in our special education program and would love to really make sure that we do all that we can for them, um, that they have really good programs in place. And there's a great program at the high school called Unified Sports that has, that takes hardly any money because it's run through the schools. And I think being creative in what we can offer through peer tutors, through these kind of different programs for our, especially our spend in our, in our schools is going to be really important. Because again, less dollars, but still really effective. And that's what I'd really like to look at. Sometimes, you know, we spend the percentages, making sure that looks equitable. Um, our advanced learners, sometimes we only even accept 10% of our advanced learners, right? And they get a less of a pie. Making sure we can really break offerings that Lehigh High, I think is really important. And pushing academic success that way. But, um, yeah. Again, that there's access across the district to these programs and that we're really thoughtful and creative in how we can serve these students with these programs at as little dollars as we can, because there'll just be a shortfall of funds for all of them. But I think that with that framework, we can make really strong, solid programs that serve all of those groups.
So this is a, an interesting question for me just because where I work, I see the dollars and the way they are divided among programs is at the end of discussion, even among my department where, oh, this group gets more than us. It's, it's a, an ongoing, very realistic, uh, situation that this, this experience in that district. And, um, as somebody was saying, I agree with that. We have to be looking at trying to do the best we can to address all of them. Um, and that's going to be a bit of a challenge because without having, uh, all the insights, exactly how much is spent here or there, it's kind of hard to say at this moment, exactly what I believe would, this percentage or that percentage. Um, but I think it goes on to my core philosophy and kind of my philosophy to say, well, I should do. The, we need to make sure we're spending our money on what's the most important and necessary that affects students and their, uh, their homes. Though all those programs are very important and fundamental with that. So those are definitely programs I would prioritize and make sure that we, uh, let's receive the needs of the individuals there. Um, I know special education is a place that is, is perennially, perennially need of, of support. And so I know that's a definitely a place that, uh, I would like to look at. Um, but in all instances, uh, who would prioritize, what is it that I believe is going to impact the students the most? Uh, of those things, uh, with those programs and our budgets. I'm also fascinated of looking at trying to create some public-private partnerships as well to also address some of those, uh, situations that provide extended, uh, opportunities for students to either be, uh, connected to support or to help push on and moving on. And I would also look at to extend our money to address the needs of the community and also people building services that we're developing.
Okay, thank you. Trevor, we're going to switch to one minute in the interest of time. So one minute candidates. Uh, let's talk about cell phones. Every school district is now required to have a cell phone policy per state legislation. What are your thoughts about the effectiveness of current policies in Alpine and Atlantic districts? And would you advocate for any changes regarding cell phones in schools?
Well, this is a, a big discussion I have had with that, that our, because right where the other side is our digital team that, that talks about all the digital stuff. Um, we've had been having conversations about the role of those in our, in our classrooms. And almost universally even, uh, is that we need to make sure that the technology that we're using in our classrooms is going to enhance their learning and not distract. And I think that's the purpose behind, uh, the cell phone policies. And as a teacher, I've experienced that same struggle with having students who just don't want engaging. And so, uh, I'm, uh, I think any policy is as good as rolling to the, but. And so I think that's the thing as a school board, bring to say, hey, this is something really important. And that's the type of ways we're going to address those different needs and push the, the direction and force to the degree that should be.
Um, I'm actually so happy with, um, that state law and I feel like it is going really, really well in, um, our schools. Well, the middle school and the high school have a policy that a phone cannot be out during their class time. They can only check it between classes and at lunch. And I've been in meetings where parents were like, this will never fly. And I'm here to tell you, it's gone really pretty smoothly this year in, in our schools in a great way. Um, if anything, sometimes it's a little annoying for parents, right? Because I'm like, you need something and, but I've adjusted. And I think parents will adjust if we do stand strong behind that policy. Because I do think it creates more equity because not everyone has a cell phone, right? Sometimes they ask kids to use cell phones in high school and classes. So we all have Chromebooks now. And being able to use that technology and not the cell phone, I think has been really, really good for our schools and our students.
Okay, thank you. Uh, right before I came here, I talked to a member of the current board who was headed to a meeting in the West about the school closure, which those are tough conversations, right? So let's talk about school closures and boundary adjustments. How should the board balance community concerns, enrollment trends and facility needs when deciding on school closures on a boundary or boundary adjustments?
Yeah, this is right from the heart here, um, because of the history of the schools that, um, this seat will represent. Uh, I think the, the biggest issue is to have good communication with the, with the community. Have some transparent communication when dealing with these really, really tough, tough issues. Um, because sometimes it seems like a school is declining and it's not always. Boundary studies, again, having, looking, trying to get the best information we can to look to the future, right? And whether we have growth or declining. And also trying really hard to not do boundary adjustments all the time. I think that's a big deal. We don't want to make a family switch to a new school and then have to switch again in a short period of time. It's hard enough to go through some of these switches that have to be done sometimes. But to make it as painless as possible for the community with really open and honest communication, I think will be a priority.
Okay, uh, yeah, school closure, that's an interesting thing for me because the, my elementary school actually was closed, uh, the one that I attended. Um, I remember there was a, a, a film of locks that, that came with that. And so I understand sort of the, the feelings that are connected with that. At the same time, we have schools that are beyond their, uh, exceed their amount. And so I do think that with this new board and this new district, we will definitely need to look at those boundaries. And I think it's an opportunity to set a more sustainable set of boundaries that within the communities that our community needs. So I think that's going to be a priority, definitely, uh, for the school board to set boundaries. That might happen one time. Think even from there on, hopefully the boundaries will be more intermittent and more balanced based off of the trends that we see. And so I really hope that as soon as we address the boundaries, we make sure that we, and that is sustainable for the long term.
Thanks. Candidates, project 10 years into the future, what will the new school district have accomplished and be known for?
I love this question, um, because I envision for our district that we have been able to take what we are given here at closer representation, be able to address the needs of our community. And that we're going to be able to see our community really fly. That we're going to be able to see that, um, with the change rate, to make it responsive, that this we're going to make it. Children of all different skills and abilities backgrounds will be able to reach their potential. I often say that, uh, people say, what's my vision with school district? My mission is that we are able to create a, uh, students who are going to be able to contribute to society, be well-rounded and be thoughtful, critical thinkers, cross-siders. And we'll generally be able to, uh, lift this all up. So I can say we will be successful by the time that, you know, for now, the kids who are leaving are being helped to be prepared, being able to say, hey, I had a good experience in these schools and that our schools are the choice of our community to be able to send the kids to. I think that's where we will see success.
Um, you know, I hope in 10 years we're thriving. Obviously, I think everyone hopes for that. I had the unique opportunity this week and it's just making me think about it. I told you guys, the first, um, PTA was at River Rock Elementary and they just celebrated their 10 year anniversary and held a big celebration, um, that I was able to go to. And I can't tell you how rewarding it was to see programs. To see a school that started with a thousand dollar PTA that had grown to a $30,000 PTA. To see projects that I had spent hours and hours on that have just flourished and grown. And a population that loves their teachers. They had pictures up of every teacher. And I can see that happening while like a, a bigger district-wide level where we're just like so grateful and so happy because everyone is thriving because we put time into it. The celebration took hours and hundreds of hours to plan. I only put in about five to 10 on this specific one. But I just think that as we all put into this district, hopefully it will thrive.
Thank you. Before we give our closing statements, I just want to give a shout out to our, um, police officer back here in the back. You are new this hour, right? Or were you here the last hour too?
We swapped. Next one is same week.
You looked different. So we gave a shout out last hour. I wanted to, I want you to know that you're staying in the background, but we see you and we appreciate you. And thank you for helping everyone to be safe and all you do for our schools and our, in our streets. Um, okay, candidates, we are at the end. Please take 90 seconds to make a closing statement addressing anything you didn't get to say or something you want to emphasize. This is your closing statement.
Um, thank you. I'm glad you didn't put me to sleep. Um, you know, as I've gone through this journey, which I will say, really excited about the opportunity to be, um, part of this new district. But campaigning has been out of my comfort zone and something I've learned a lot about myself while doing. And, um, I just, as I really contemplated why I'm doing this, it's because I feel like I can be a really strong advocate for these schools and this community. Um, like I said, there's schools that I love and not only an advocate in form of this district, but I believe that a school board member is an advocate across the state. That a big part of this job will be being an advocate at the legislature and working not only with our city council, our police here, but working at a state level to make sure that we're working with the school, you know, the state school board with, um, our legislatures that are downtown Salt Lake to create laws that really help our students here. That I can advocate on every level of education, um, for these communities and then take that and that knowledge that I've had for 20 years to advocate on the state level. So, um, that's just what I hope to do is be someone that's accessible to people, to be in the schools, to be present in all the meetings so that I can take the community feedback and take that to the district and then to the state.
Thank you, Mindy. Uh, I appreciate all the work you've done for the community. I, I'd enjoy getting to know her a little bit more. So I am just exceptionally passionate about education and that's so that I dedicated 13 years of my professional life to, to education and to gain even more psychosurveys around me. And, um, I love this community. I remember actually as I was heading out this summer and I was driving around to go start to talk to people, I was looking like, I love where we live. And I really look forward to the opportunity to represent this community, to be there, not just simply, uh, to actually reach out to people, to, to know what it is that they are hoping for, what they're really looking for. Uh, it's one of those things where passion isn't always loud, uh, but it's persistent. It's diligent. It's always looking to make the next step even better. That's something I believe I embody as an educator, uh, in my, what I've been able to do. I've never just been going to just, uh, take the easy course. I've always kind of taken the hard one just because the benefits, how we refront it are, are immense. That's something I truly believe in. I believe that, uh, that's represented as important, that we're here for the community. And as a dad, as an educator, I really believe that what we are about to unpack is one of the most important things for our community. And we're very into it to help make it the best that it can be for.
Before we think, our candidates, I just want to thank those of you who are attending parent person tonight and also those of you who will be watching at home for, uh, caring and coming to learn. And let's now think. And let's now thank these two for sharing their thoughts and really for being willing to engage and run for public office to serve all of us and our kids. Thank you very much. And with that, we are done. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much.